Hello, everyone. I put two of us about heads for just a moment, please. Thank you very much, and welcome to the Town of Holden Beach Regiswooder Monthly Meeting. Is there anyone that's not familiar with? Is anybody's first time? Everybody I see is family here, so thanks for coming tonight. We are officially calling the meeting to order, and number three on the agenda, the stand and legislature leaders, to our right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Number four on the agenda is consideration of approving the agenda presented, and I understand there may be some changes. Ms. Pat?
Yes, since we did have a discussion on the board's priority objectives, which is item number 19 at the budget meeting, I would ask that we take this item off today's agenda. The decisions will appear in the minutes of that budget meeting last week, and if any of the citizens then had any comments or questions, once they read those minutes, they can address the board at the MSBO CM.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change? Second, on favor say aye. The agenda is approved as amended. Number five, a consideration of approving the minutes with your permission, measures. I would ask that be a motion considering approval of all four sets of minutes.
Aye.
Is there a second? Motion made in second, and one opposed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She announced Madam Clerk. Number six, public comments on the agenda items. My sheet is vacant. Did we get anyone that signed up? Apparently not. So, hey, we're making progress here. Well, number seven. Mr. Chris Clemmons?
As you all probably know now, every year we actually have a street fund. Indeed, certain people actually budget money for paving streets. So, here in Vegas, this is the time of year we try to get everything along the way to happen. The town advertised for bids for road paving, for sand spurs, sandpipers, and sand dunes, to bid to come back in. I think it was Friday, and making recommendations, asking for a recommendation to approve contracts for street paving, sand dunes, sandpipers, and sand spurs. One bidder was Highland Paving, on page thirty-four, I think, at the packet. Well, Heather sent out something. What did we do about? I think, what was it, ninety-six, something like that, Highland Paving. They've done Paving in the past, but nobody said it for the job. I couldn't see any reason why, other than what they were going to do in the future. You know, well, hang here, on the street, all of the work after this. Where can we get it? It happened to kind of sit paving, probably next thirty, forty days, I think, when the contract taxes on it. That deal says, well, it was a pool.
I move that we perform with the Highland Paving, if there's a bid, for the work that needs to be done on those three streets this year, so that we can proceed with the contract.
I second that. More discussion. If you've got none, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. She announced Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Thank you, Miss Clerk. Please, Chief Jeremy Dixon, number eight.
So, as I talked about last week, we were trying to work on some of the numbers without reporting and getting some accurate information. We've actually attached a copy of the reports that were taken, that way they're publicly seen where we're taking the reports and what kind of incidents they're in. In the adjustment period, we're trying to work out and get these numbers accurate, and it's going to be. One discrepancy that you may notice on the first sheet, is it says, instead of reports four, but then when you look at the actual log, there's actually six reports, everything. This is something that I honestly do not have an answer for right now, so. It's a numbers thing, and we're trying to make sure it's accurate when we're giving this information out to you. As far as that, March was a march for us, starting to pick up a little bit, nothing too great, and we had taken a few reports, as you can see on page two. That's what we have with the police report. I know a lot of you have questions about why we have several officers sitting in here, so before I get into that, I will ask you if you have any questions on the police report, and I'd be glad to try to answer them if I can.
So, I commented privately, this Officer Jessica Delapamela has been very busy.
Yes, yes, we worked her hard in March. And actually, that will lead pretty good into the next thing. So, I want to recognize our officers as the reason why I'm here. And over the years, several of our officers have earned certificates and training from the state. The State Board that holds our law enforcement certification also issues intermediate and advanced training certifications. And most of the officers sitting in this room have actually already earned those. And I'm proud to say that Jessica, who probably didn't even know why we called her in here tonight, has earned her intermediate certificate. So, if you could step up here, I would actually like to read you this. So, this is from the state. In order to recognize the level of competence of law enforcement officers serving government agencies within the state, to foster interest in college education and professional law enforcement training programs, and to attract highly qualified people into law enforcement career, the criminal justice education and training standards for the mission establish the law enforcement officer professional certificate program. Due to all of those qualifications, this is your certificate from the state for your intermediate law enforcement certification. Very proud of her. That's all we have from the police report. Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you for your time.
All of you do. Good job, gentlemen. Your prayer, number nine?
Yeah, accepting this February meeting update from the Inlet and Beach Protection Board. This is going to come up later, but we had an interesting debate a little bit about what the main work that's going to be forthcoming at the Central Reach area. And I know it's, 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 it's right here, but I think, did we sell on a Florence Michael Central Reach?
Reimbursement project.
I suggested calling it CRR, Central Reach Reimbursement, just because Central Reach has a meaning to everybody, and we want to make it clear that it's a project that is a FEMA project that evolved, that hopefully will be reimbursed, we could simply call it Central, CRR. It's a shorter, it's kind of that resume after.
I agree with that. We just want to clarify that it is not Central Reach Two, the following on, you know, it's a reimbursement of the FEMA monies for Michael and Florence. So, and I like the idea of Central Reach is the four point one miles, right? So, I'm okay with that. Yes?
I would just say that the Inlet and Beach Protection Board, since this is relative to them, would need to tell the facilitator at the next meeting that that change has been made, because at the last meeting, it was determined by the group that Central Reach Two would be what Florence Michael mitigation was, so, and that's how it's referenced here, but they would just need to say that the board made that decision.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up. I think we had a discussion about that confusing, because it's not really Central Reach Two, it's the Florence and Michael reimbursement in that area. I'm okay with that, Pat, it's less the...
Just a suggestion, but it's easier.
I agree. Okay, so Central Reach Reimbursement.
CRR Two, or CRR, just CRR.
Sounds good. And that's all I have for that. Thank you.
I guess the record should show that by consensus on that name tag. Number ten, Mr. Chris Clemmons again. You're a popular man.
Well, I've been promised some good news when our vacuum system pumps taking four number upgrades for quite some time now, and good news is, I think you're going to get some good news tonight, especially Leo Green is actually going to give you a nice report, and that's even better news than me. So, no further to do. I'll hand the microphone to him, and he can take over.
Well, we received a final certificate of occupancy today. The project started back in July ninth. We had a hundred and eighty days to complete the job, put it in operation, and they missed that target by about ten or twelve days to start putting it in operation. The last forty-five, sixty days, we've been working with subcontractors on the building and the banking and the doors and the frames and that kind of stuff, but the system has been operating and met the targets they forebegan of operation. The, I'm real proud of that system for the town. I think it's, I think it's going to be an asset, and a reliability of the whole lot better than what you had. Got a lot of monitoring features to it that you hadn't had before. It should save staff time. It's a, it's a solid system, certainly focused, some improved, and open, but any questions you might have about the project?
I don't have any. I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say, you know, as, as, as the progress in this particular project continued to take place, you had some challenges along the way. And Chris was kind enough, he kept us in the loop on a monthly basis with that. And compliments to Chris, and yourself, and myself, and Peter, we got together, we went down, we had a look at the project. And other than the items that were on the punch list and stuff like that, I was, I was extremely impressed.
Well, we certainly enjoyed working with David, and Christie, Chris, Ken, Heather, throughout this process. We've learned a whole lot about, about these type systems, as far as how they're connected, the development of them, as that was by the sixth, uh, six, seven completion date that we had. If you haven't been down there, been up in it, you need to look at it.
And so, where are we now with regard to number three? Now that we have the certificate in hand, are we...
I intend to add that to the agenda budget workshop on the nineteenth, as we discussed previously.
I mean, also, from Chris's perspective, too, I mean, he doesn't have to run down and check the system out, he can get on his telephone and look at the individual, where the issues are, where the problems are, which is really a great, great feature to have.
Right, we are, we're in the process now. Chris wanted to add something the other day about hydrants and so forth, monitoring, that's in the bill.
Appreciate that.
And that'll be, that'll be on your, on your SCADA system.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Clam, are you still up there?
Yeah, I'm going to stay here. I'm sorry. Clam, as you know, we, San Angeles actually advertised for bids again on a rollback service and clarified some decisions we had with what we needed. We've got the bids back from BOS, and they're actually taking thirty-nine and forty. And what I'm seeing, it's about to low bidder again with school with its long service, and yet you can see the numbers there. For, for, like a recommendation that you choose a contractor for that service, so we can bring it over to make that happen.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we choose forward lawn service bus with the contractor.
Second that? Ms. Cassidy?
I don't think there's any discussion, but I'd just like to make a statement, and but for the fact that, excuse me, but for the fact that we included the rollback in the ordinance, I would vote against it, but it has, would have no, no meaning, would be meaningless to us. But I still do not see the utility in allowing people to put the cans out at any time they want, so they can lay at the curb for up to a week, but then we're going to pay fifty thousand dollars per year for all those cans back. Any problem that you have with health, hygiene, beauty, aesthetics, will be at the front end as well as the back end, so that to me, that's no benefit. We're going to live with cans on the street for seven days, but we're going to roll them back immediately. I just don't see the benefit, and I don't see why that's worth spending fifty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money.
Any more comments?
The only comment I have is that, you know, what's, what's the price of what we pay currently to roll cans back on the BOB? Isn't that in the area, thirty-five K? Yeah, I don't want to argue with you.
I'm not going to argue, but the idea is, we would not have the rollback at all. So, instead of spending any money, we'd spend no money.
Any more discussion, comments? Can we read the votes?
Yep.
All in favor of the vote, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Again, it's pronounced Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Mr. Adams, talk for this inspection, claiming.
A lot of times, well, let me start off by saying that if, if the public has ever seen their money spent, better spent than it was for the lift station, then I don't know when it's going to be. I've been working for government a long time, and I've never seen money used in a way that benefited the community better and had a, more of an impact across the board than the money that the board decided to spend to make our lift stations more resilient against storms. The work that was performed down there was excellent. The, there's some good craftsmanship down there on top of good work. The structural engineer was excellent to work with, the lead engineering company was also very, very good to work with. They had a man that our office confide with a lot and worked with, and their main contractor on the job had an individual on the job that, that staff were familiar with. I was familiar with a bunch of larger construction jobs that I worked with him on in Leaven. But, and what I want to say is, is that the town does, I don't think the board understands, or that some of the folks in the town understand, the amount of staff work that went in to that project, and the amount of community work, and the work that the board put in during that process. Sometime in 2013 was when me and Chris really started harping about the fact that we had potential issues with those lift stations. And over the course of the years, it kind of grew and started rolling more and more, and until Leo was in on a subcommittee, we had a subcommittee of citizens and stakeholders who've worked on it. Y'all impacted it somewhat, the SCADA systems that we have and stuff are, actually became a requirement when we joined the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So, the many, many things that came together to make this happen are beyond a lot of people's recognition or their understanding of how it came. But at the same time, our resilience to a storm just got better by at least thirty-three percent. And the fact that what we have done is, it gives us a better opportunity not to have a tremendous amount of economic impact on a low event storm. If we continue to go the way we are, then those, that resilience will get better and better, and that impact will be less and less a possibility. The modern day things that have been applied down there, it is actually ahead of its time somewhat compared to other places that have it now, because we benefited from all of the things that they run. But that is a very good job down there. No, just leave it at that. As far as inspections go, we sometimes get left with people thinking that what we're doing is while we are doing our job, they like to not hear about it or know about it. This book here represents the permits that were issued, issued. Every page has five or six of them. That means that somebody had to look at them, review them, check them for accuracy, and do the job. This is the number of inspections. This does not include the number of site visits to houses to state for camera, does not include the camera visits, does not include the visits that we make to take pictures or look at jobs for individuals to consult or work with them. This is just the inspections. Okay? Last year, last year, we issued...
I know that when you come out and do an inspection, it's, it's not just, as you indicated, the final inspection of, you know, your time is really taken, you know, certain phases and steps of the house being constructed, whether it's the electrical, whether it's the sheetrock, whether it's the insulation, whether it's the plumbing, and that, but your point's well taken on that, but there's a whole bunch of numbers.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it, and it's also over there. I mean, I've got some numbers, and, and these numbers are not estimates. I've got some numbers, and the reason I want to put these numbers out there is because our core responsibility is code enforcement and building inspections and planning. Last year, we issued three hundred and sixty-one building permits. We're only, we're not a big department. We issued forty-seven single-family residents, and of those three hundred and sixty-one, over a hundred and twenty of them were major renovations. That means that they went above the thirty percent mark for value of construction. The mechanical, we issued three hundred and fifty-seven. Electrical, we issued five hundred and thirty-one. Plumbing, we issued three hundred and seventy-one. The inspections, we did three thousand four hundred and twenty. Of those three thousand four hundred and twenty, two thousand three hundred and ninety-four passed. And then, of course, there was the difference in that percentage of a thousand twenty-six that were re-inspected, so the total inspection number at four thousand four hundred and forty-six. We issued ninety-five camera permits, and we spent a hundred and eighty hours, or we issued a hundred and eighty zoning permits, and we allocated an hour for those. Camera permits, it was four hundred and seventy-five hours in camera. Zoning, there was three hundred and fifty hours. We tallied, based on an average of thirty days, of twelve hundred and sixty phone calls, a hundred and eighty lots that were stayed. There was two hundred and forty hours spent on meeting minutes, that was to, to actually do the minutes for meetings, because one of our first people in our office actually does that. And hours, the number of hours spent on committees was a hundred and eight. We spent three hundred and twenty hours on con ed, two hundred hours were estimated, two hundred and eighty hours were estimated on other education, and that was for, like, contractors' events and that sort of stuff. And then, our plan review for all that was in there was estimated at two thousand six hundred and nine hours. We've been busy. It's been like this for a while. The numbers for Leaven when I left were staggering, the, because they're in my old resume, but they are staggering. I would imagine that the ten-year numbers for here are also staggering, because I don't know why, but in 2008, Holden Beach didn't seem to fall off like everywhere else did. It constantly was steady from the day I rolled in, it was just steady, and it just kind of snowballed and kept picking up. We're proud of the, of the inspection department, and we're proud of the people who are there. We just have a new girl that came on, she has an exceptional aptitude for what she's doing, and it's making it much easier with that transition. But building inspections is here to protect the public. People look at us as nuisance, but we're actually here to protect the public. And if everything that we caught was to let, be let pass by or was not to be seen, then I can guarantee you the community would be nowhere near as safe as it was. When I got here, within the first, first four months I was here, we had five decks that collapsed. To my knowledge, we've had none collapse since. There was twenty-six structures that were so far gone that when we condemned them, there was absolutely no argument except for one. And they removed them, and most of those places have built back. We implemented, the inspection department helped implement, implement things, because the CRS was never a focus until about 2012. In 2012, we started trying to work on a CRS program that had basically had just rolled along. And what we did was, we, we knew based on the normity of that program that we would have to be, take baby steps, but we couldn't jump in here. But since that time, we have the toughest national flood insurance program, which will help us with our CRS. We have the toughest. I don't know if anybody else has got one tough. Our substantial improvement steps, substantial damage, I don't know of anyone who carries it as far as we do, and has the percentage that we do. Our doom protection, I don't think anybody has anything as tough as we do now. Our free board, our free board limitations are tougher than most everyone's, because we do not, we do not distinguish between AE and VE. We got that passed. We give exceptions for going higher without penalties, and we did that by revamping our height restrictions, which allow for better architectural features while encouraging people to be more resilient against storms. These have all been baby steps. They would have been enormous economic impacts, each and every one of them. Have we tried to do it in a simple stroke of the pen, or in a fast fashion, because all of them had an economic impact. We can't take credit for the FEMA, for the new FEMA maps, but we can take credit for all the work that went into getting them to the public and getting them presented, which we did. And we are currently now working with a subcommittee on the land use plan, and we're, we're still muddling around with other things as far as parking and that kind of stuff. But your inspection department works every day for the public and for the public's interest, and, and we have a really good department. I mean, a really, really good department, and we're proud of it. Anyway, that's my report.
Any questions? Thanks for all you in your department do, Mr. Adams. Number thirteen, Ms. Lottner, and I got your name right tonight, I hope you noticed that.
I did, thank you. Recently, the town received a FEMA warrant to reimbursement check for category D, which is emergency protective services measures, an amount of ninety-two thousand dollars, approximately. It was recommended that staff, it was recommended by staff to adopt a budget amendment and order to reimburse these stipelines that were affected during the storm. to reimburse these stiff lines that were affected during the storm.
Has anyone wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the reimbursement, the appropriations as listed on page fifty-one and fifty-two.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Comment? If you're in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you say no, announce again. Thank you. Mr. Freer, number fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Bruce is long, but fast, huh? Yeah. This, it's a discussion of possible actions to struck town management, taking pitch for the development of a cost-stよかった water and waste water system development fee to report. We discussed this several times, and this is, this is agenda items in response to our attorney's recommendation to redo the town water and waste system development fees that are required by the North Carolina House Bill four thirty-six. And also, we see A is the, to allocate the budget dollars to engage the financial firm to perform the system development, the analysis and report. So I make the motion that we, again, struck the town manager to obtain bids for the development of a cost-stよかった water and wastewater system development fee to report.
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion?
Again, I would just like to point out that the necessity to do this arose because after the board adopted the developmental fee schedule, it was pushed back by the community and members of the board decided that we should be seeing the new, or the developmental fees as they were voted in and revert back to the fees that existed before the implementation of the development fee. That vote was taken at a special reason. We asked at that time that we not take this measure without giving it some due consideration, but we did. And now, we're in a place now, eight months later, where we could have been back in August if we had taken the time to actually look at the issues and look at proposals to fix those issues. So I would just like to point out, and while we're doing the budget, there's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand difference in revenue based on what the developmental fees were when they were implemented as opposed to what the developmental fees are today. So I would just like the public to realize that this isn't because the attorney said we had to do it. This is because the actions that the board took in August. And we had meetings, we discussed it in October. We came out of a special session and said that we should be implementing, something should be done within ninety days. They were going to stay there for ninety days, and as you can tell, this is a long distance from ninety days from October. And we're finally getting around to taking some affirmative steps to get the developmental fees as they should be.
Madam Attorney, can you confirm to me that the fact, the reason we're doing this is because some of us didn't think that all of the numbers were correct in the study? And now you made that public. We're now at risk of being sued if we don't have the complete confirmation of the results of the study?
I did advise the board that there was potential liability as a result of the fact that some of you opined in public forums that you believed that fees were illegal, which I do not believe that fees are legal. I think they were adopted pursuant to the statute, but I think that the comments of individual commissioners have put town at risk, and therefore I think you should go back through the process.
Just to be clear, Mr. Fletcher, it wasn't because the numbers were wrong, it was because it was that people on this board said that it was illegal, and that's the reason we got that for something. Am I correct?
That is part of the discussion that we had.
Thank you. What's the word?
How was the word that was used in part? It's not one thing, it's many things, but we've had those discussions, as y'all, I hope you will recall.
And we weren't quite as diligent as we should have been in the ninety days that we were observing. So getting this rolling again, I think is, well, basically what we promised the public here.
Yeah, the ninety days was set, we had, we set back to where it was previously, so it wasn't, wasn't an urgency.
There is an urgency, there is the, again, the question of what is the appropriate fee? Not just it was the fee, but again, we're now moving forward again. I'm disappointed it's taken us this long, but I am glad we're moving forward again.
So if you notice, the last time we used the engineering firm, I think we decided we wanted to use the financial firm to do this this time. And I think the other two things are a discussion of, you know, inputs to discuss are the need for a water tower and the sort of capacity from the county, which we had a discussion for now and started this invasion.
I don't mean, I could be mistaken, but I don't, I remember we discussed the issue of whether it should be an engineering or financial firm, but I don't recall a decision being made there.
Okay, I thought there was.
I think it would be a good idea, and the big issue was whether or not the money we paid to the county to buy capacity, should that or should that not be included in our calculation?
Were you switching subjects?
And the other is the fact that we have the tower, the water tower, is a still a question, but I would think an accountant could be more solid in judging whether or not that number. And I'm not sure, Madam Attorney, do we know statewide, has it been decided if-
The statute requires one of two people to perform the analysis, so my suggestion would be before we, my suggestion would be that you instruct the town manager to obtain bids from qualified individuals pursuant to House Bill four thirty-six. And that way, you're going to get both, and then you can select, you'll have all the qualifications, then you can, as a board, decide who you want to-
That's fine, but I would, I would make sure we include both engineering and financials.
Any more discussion, questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you say no, if you have a demand.
You didn't approve, you guys didn't put the budget amendment in the motion, though.
I'll, I'll-
You can do a separate motion. You can do a separate motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass the approval ordinance nineteen oh seven, an ordinance of ending, ordinance eighteen dash ten, the revenues appropriations ordinance for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Second? Any more discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you say no, if you have a demand. On to number fifteen, Mr. Freer.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we instruct the town manager to obtain bids to evaluate and propose optimum Holden Beach town government organization. If you look at the supporting material, this is, try to look back to fifty-four. This is to, you know, the RSM internal control reports to the board commissioners dated January fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Quote, "While the town is not required by standards to separate town manager and finance officer, based on our internal control review, we believe it prudent and we recommend you separate the two roles." So I, again, make the motion that we, and this will be finance department-focused organization evaluation and proposal.
So your motion qualifies that we're always looking at the finance functions. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I disagree. We have been through the RSM report and discussed it at least three times now. We have acknowledged that there are deficiencies in internal controls that need to be addressed. We have discussed having the improvement plan developed and actions taken, some of which are already underway, to address those individual deficiencies, knowing that we have a small department, as do many other small municipalities, that is functioning without graft and without lost money. We have said we should try to take this slow, to do what we can to get the improvements in place, and then to evaluate whether or not changes need to be made. I do not understand spending more money on an evaluation of something because there was a recommendation made by a consultant. Consultants can make recommendations that we do not have to accept. They are a recommendation. I do not understand why we cannot let the steps be taken that we have discussed to have the plan in place, the corrections made, evaluate the new performance, and then if something needs to be done, we can see what needs to be done because we have agreed the plan, we have agreed how to watch it, how to judge it. This, to me, seems to be another waste of a few thousand dollars for a study that I honestly don't understand what's going to come out of it that is going to benefit the running of the town.
What I think will come out of the study is that we would know exactly what the positions in the finance accounting function are supposed to do and what their qualifications need to be. For twelve years now, we've been told that no one in the function, accounting finance function, has the ability to keep the records the way that the government accounting standards board require them to be kept. I would like to know what those job descriptions and those requirements are before we pass on somebody's solid recommendation that we get somebody to be a finance director that is qualified to be a finance director and separate from the town manager and separate from the staff. I would be much more comfortable if somebody who knows what they're doing looks at those jobs and says, "This is what you need to have in that position and what qualifications they have." And my own personal view is that what we have now is not going to be changed by a seminar or a couple of days' training, but needs somebody who's qualified now to keep the books on the accrual basis that's required by the government accounting standards board and has been recognized by the auditors since two thousand and seven, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know. And I would imagine this year's will probably do the same thing, to tell us, we don't have anyone qualified to keep the books the way they're supposed to be kept. And to me, as an audit chair, to me, that's important.
Excuse me, there are a couple of issues. I agree that, I don't believe we should incur the cost of having another survey or audit done. But what I will say is, my recollection is we had the person who's in charge of the internal audit team here, and he did say that we don't have a qualified person, but a vast majority of the municipalities in the state don't have a qualified person, so you send it out to have done. I believe we do that. So we, in fact, have a qualified person do it for the fee. The other thing I recall him saying was that the deficiencies that were found here and the way the town is run, a lot of it is just because of scale, that most small communities don't have the capability or the amount of personnel to provide up. And one of the things we've asked the administration here to do is to keep the number of personnel as small as possible, to crush train the personnel so that they would be able to step in for one another, which, when you think about it, asks that we don't have a separation of duties as you may have in a larger community. So do we have a concern? Do we have a legitimate idea that we want things done? Absolutely. Should we implement what the audit team said? Absolutely. But I don't think we need to spend the money to have somebody else come in and more or less say what you just said, John. You don't have somebody who's qualified. We know that, but most municipalities don't. We fall into the category of most people, and I don't want to incur not only the cost of this review, but also the cost of hiring somebody else that would be capable because that person isn't going to walk through that door very cheaply. My position is that I would be against this motion. Anyone else?
Well, I guess, you know, let me word this carefully. The, you know, what I'd like to do is, and I know it's later on on the agenda where we stand pertaining to the recent, the two thousand and eighteen audit. I've got the audit results for two thousand and seventeen. I've got the, and as a result of the audit results from two thousand and seventeen, that's why we went to RMS to look and investigate the internal review controls, processes and that, and they gave us the recommendation. There's one missing element that I still would like to see, and that's the two thousand and eighteen audit. But I'll, I'll wait to get information on that when it comes up as an agenda item. Do I, do I think we need additional support and help? Yes. I don't, I'm not arguing that. You know, I am cautious of, you know, I don't know what the dollar amount we're talking about here, so it's difficult for me to comprehend whether I'm for it or against it. But I might be swayed once I see the new audit and the results of that audit.
Yeah, we don't know the dollar amount, so it's a matter of going out and seeing what the, what the bid would be. And I'd also, you know, like everyone's saying, it was a recommendation from RSM to do it. And pretending to a plan addressing the RSM, the many items, I do not have a plan. I've been waiting for a plan. I do not know any-
I am going to repeat-
-any items to address.
I will repeat what I said at a recent meeting. We, as a board, should formally request, as part of the year's objectives, that the town manager, as part of his objectives, commit to the plan of addressing the RSM internal control report, that we monitor that for its progress, and that becomes a critical part of the performance appraisal for next year. All we have to do as a board of commissioners is formally request that that be a major part of the objectives and that we expect to see a complete action plan to address the report, and it will be done. We are responsible for the town manager, who is also the finance officer's, performance appraisal, and setting objectives for a fiscal year. It is in his contract that we are supposed to do that, and we have not been doing that to the dates that we agreed that we should do it. And I suggest we get on with it because the year is going to be half over again before we get to this very important item. So I would recommend that we ask, that we make a motion to formally ask the town manager to present an action plan for addressing the internal report deficiencies, internal control deficiencies, and that that be a major part of his objectives when we agree his objectives document.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the floor.
That's one of the-
She didn't back up.
I said I would recommend that we do that. I did not say I didn't.
So, so we had RSM report, we've talked about it, we've discussed it, but I was under the impression we had, we had full agreement to implement whatever was in, what was in that report. That report was in, you know, it's been probably almost a year since we started working on the report. Those issues have been, have been out there- Those issues have been out there, and I was not, you know, in the meetings, we had them present. We had questions and answers. To me, there was no discussion whether we had to formally request that the town manager act upon that report. It was, it was very, to me, it was very obvious that the deficiencies were identified and that those were going to be addressed as soon as possible. So I'm a little bit taken aback that we have to officially do anything to address those deficiencies because they've been out there for a long time.
If I can just add one thing. I just, I've got the accounting background, so I'm pretty sensitive to these things and pretty sensitive to our responsibility to watch over the finances. But we spend some quarter of a million dollars a year for accountants. And the auditors for 12 years now have told us we don't have the auditor, the accountants on the staff who can put the records together the way they need to be kept. I think for a quarter of a million, $300,000, we ought to be able to afford an accountant on the staff as well as a finance, maybe separate from a finance director. I don't know what we need, but I would like to see what those job descriptions would look like from somebody who knows how this should be done and then what kind of qualifications we need to have in those positions. Maybe we don't need different people, but I think we do. I think, I think we need an accountant on the staff that could put the records together, or the LGC says we need to go out and hire somebody each month to put our records together. I think that's going to cost more than hiring an accountant for the staff. I may be wrong, but I would love to have somebody who's an expert at this, look at those positions and tell us what's the best deal for the town of Over Beach.
If you look at the qualifications that are required for different positions that you can get when we do some web searches, it might be League of Municipalities, it might be, it might be SFG. It might, it's in a lot of different places. If you look at job descriptions for what a finance officer should be, they all make it very clear it does not have to be a certified public accountant. It doesn't even have to be somebody with an accounting background, a business background, et cetera, et cetera. There are other positions, other positions that make up a finance department. Again, with some searching, you can look up qualifications that are necessary for this to fit, for these different positions. Again, you are asking whether our finance department functions almost and that you want a review, an assessment. You said finance department, although the original, what you wrote was sort of like a whole organization, so that did puzzle me a bit. But I don't believe that at this point in time, we should be looking at the detail. We're going to get a compensation and a basic organization report from LGC. We have job descriptions. We have the details, there will be details of what different jobs entail that will then go into the compensation. I don't know what you're asking this for at this point in time when we have different activities already in place, as well as the improvement of the overall, I call it, department. And you're asking for something that, to me, doesn't bring us any benefit. We have a town manager, finance officer by contract. That is what we have. That is what we are dealing with. That is not going to change without significant steps by this board. And so we should be looking at how to improve the systems and get the people who we have, the extra training, which has started, as I understand it, and then evaluate the performance of this department over a year or so and see the improvements that happen. And if improvements don't happen that are to everybody's satisfaction, then you can take a look at what do we have to do. Let the improvements get done.
I'd like to see what was done, what has been done so far.
I can address some of that if you'd like.
Yeah, so, yes, go ahead.
Even though there was no definitive timeline identified by the board regarding those things in the report that were deemed shortcomings, we haven't just been standing by, sitting on our hands, waiting to be told to move forward. Some of the things specifically that we've gone ahead and taken down, and this is just feedback, is informal because we, I was under the impression that we were going to wait until we got the report back from RSM, RMS, before proceeding formally get through the budget season first. The classification and pay plan information that was questioned during the outbrief to the board, that was sent within three or four days up to the program manager, Robbie Bitner, followed by a telecon on when follow-up and answers to those specific, that specific item would be revised in the report. That, I believe, I reported back to the board, correct me if I'm wrong, but that feedback was inconclusive, something along the lines of, man, this is tax season, and then my accountants are working 80 hours a week. We'll, we need to have a third party review once that type of thing is done. But, and I haven't followed up again, other than the fact that I believe we just heard from Landon, who was the project officer on the, on the report, has requested some follow-up information on that. Regarding the vendor list in issue, have made an inquiry, two inquiries, to Greg Allison, who is the chief accountant at the School of Government, regarding that matter, and have not received a response affirming or denying the efficacy of that finding. And I would like to point out that the records retention schedule that was recently adopted by the board does seem to conflict in some, some degree. And until that matter, I think, is adjudicated with the records retention specialists or at least have an opinion on that, I think that we're stymied somewhat as to exactly can we go in and amend the status of a vendor in our software system. I'd love to take a knee-jerk reaction on something that may be a violation of a record retention policy, state law. The classification and pay plan study, the board requested, asked or directed during a budget workshop, and we'll forward with that. That's on, I believe, the status specific to that is on the agenda later on. And that has been initiated, and I can provide a more detailed update on that when we get to that agenda item. Discussion with Sharon Edmondson at the local finance officer. Sharon Edmondson is deputy state treasurer of the state local finance division last week in February regarding best practices for internal controls and other best management practices previously that were available, made available through the local government commission, through training and/or on the local government website, but they have now been removed. Those policies are under review by the state local government fiscal control section. They are reworking its entire suite of guidance best management practices. It will be several months before they are available for consumption by local governments. But we will be in contact, I've been invited to contact her directly for draft of it, of them, if and as desired. I have not followed up on that. I will, though, depending on what the desired timeframe on affecting, if any, implementation of remedies for the several items in the report. CAFR training for the two staff members is scheduled from May 21st at the School of Government. Ms. Margaret Manuel will attend that. Regarding personnel action forms, those were actually implemented before the report was rendered as well. Other, other items like vacation and leave, those have also been amended to our administrative policies. That's where I am with moving forward and implementing some of the fixes I identified in our mission plan.
Any more questions, any discussion, any further?
I'd just like to see, you know, we're sitting here, we're young David, I appreciate the fact that you brought all that to my attention or to our attention and that I'd like to see this process a little bit more formalized.
I'll be glad to do that. Do you all have a timeframe if you'd like to see that accomplished?
What's a reasonable, what's a reasonable expectation? Is it four weeks from now? Are you going to go halfway there?
I'd like to be able to get through the rendering of the budget message and then have at least a couple of weeks to formally address those items to, you know, to do it at, I think, at a reasonable timeframe, certainly before the end of the fiscal year.
Would it be possible to say the June VOCM for a full report on the plan and progress against each item?
If that's the timeline that the board would desire, I'd be glad to attempt that.
Yeah, that's right. I'd like to see a plan. Right, and as expected, I think we did jump on some things that we could address immediately. That's what I expected. So I'd like to, again, to Joe's point, formalize it and put a frame in place to address the report.
Could we agree then with the June VOCM? Because, again, budget message, things that need to be done, a lot of the other things.
I think that's reasonable. You okay with that? David, it's okay with that.
Yeah, I'll throw our motion until that is cleared.
All right, motion standing, rescinded. Okay, move on. One thing I would like to add, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong, but just so the public understands, all these reports that we're talking about from accounting reviews and so forth, nothing has been stated that the town of Over Beach is of all opinion. All right, number 16. Is that right, number 16?
Right. Salary benefits, external review. I put that in there only as a follow-up to, you know, follow-up exactly, you know, are there any updates, David, pertaining to the status of the salary and benefit review? Has the review started? When did it start? How long was it going to take?
Yes, sir.
All those type 92s?
I don't have a formal written report for you, but I'll attempt to give you a verbal on it. The MAPS group is the management and personnel system subcontractor to the local county league of municipalities. As the board conferred, when we've on-boarded them a couple of weeks back, our employees have been briefed on the process. But now part of that process is that they will interact and engage with the development of their work center and job descriptions. They will be completing those inputs Thursday, I believe. There's the suspense to their department heads. Department heads will review along with myself for about a week. Our goal is to be able to transition those inputs to the MAPS group by next Thursday. It's probably going to take a total of the time that we ink, ink them in until the documents are ready for the board to review, about three months. And I'm being generous with allowing a month for the board to percolate and evaluate, review any implementation strategies involved with the report. Once the MAPS group assimilates the staff's inputs, they will develop updated job center descriptions, work center descriptions, job descriptions, perform an analysis on the benefits using comparative life organizations and what the market realities are. So then we anticipate that there will be a draft report. And that will be after the, the job descriptions, the employees' job descriptions are reviewed, there will be a series of interrogatories with management and department heads between the MAPS group. And based on that, then a draft report will be provided to the board and a formal outbrief prior to your consideration. So three to four months is what we anticipate from a couple of weeks ago. I anticipate that will be end of July, mid- August sometime.
July, August timeframe, yes, sir.
A question. So if that particular group sees something that's, that works in an employee's favor, we could make an adjustment during the year?
Oh, absolutely. The board always has budget authority as far as, you know, what you want to do. I mean, you made a couple of, not the front balance appropriation, yes, sir.
Because that might, might happen.
It's a definite possibility that that kind of thing may happen.
Right, okay, good. Everybody okay? Move on.
Moving to the next half?
Yep.
Number 17.
All right, 17. This is going to be interesting. There's, there's, I'm trying to, trying to. I called David this morning. I was talking to David a little bit too, and I said to him, I said, you know, we had an interesting meeting on Friday, and David had a more interesting meeting on April 3rd with the county as it pertains to a number of different projects that we were kind of debating on, deciding, had concerns also. And ATM has been working with us behind the scenes to, and we also, we also put together, a while ago, we put together Resolution 1810, and on page three, and I don't want to steal any of your thunder right, right now, but it's, it's, it's kind of like, wow, this is really a great subject to talk about. But I myself and the staff, right, we want to share as much information as we possibly can with everybody so everybody has a clear understanding of exactly what's going on here. Not only has it, doesn't have an impact on today, but it potentially has an impact on tomorrow as well. So we're all in this together, but the more people I put in this boat than hand a set of oars to, the better off we're going to be and that. So where do I start? Really where I'd like to start is, last night, I asked myself a question. What, what drove the request to conduct the modeling for the inlet? And then I sat there for about two seconds, and then I turned around and said to myself, I gave myself an answer. And I'll read it to you. I, I believe the answer on the question, if I can read my own writing, right, centers around the potential impact and concerns expressed on page three of the Resolution 1810 regarding the potential deepening and widening of the Lockwood-Polly channel project. The cost associated with this with ATM is $47,000. And I, I believe the modeling, the reason why we went to this was because of the concern about the deepening and the widening of the channel. What else? What else?
That's not right.
No, that's, that's why I'm talking. But that would also help us, right?
Not for that project. I'm going to move right over there because I'm going to go to some slides.
That's why I wanted to have this interaction.
The $47,000 that we sent for the Lockwood Folly Inlet Modeling was as a result of that, we did not receive the sand this time, and it went to Oak Island, and we wanted to have an argument, a solid argument, for why sand should be placed on our east end instead of Oak Island's west end with the crossing project. So the update on that, based on where it said Lockwood Folly Inlet Modeling, is that we had hoped the crane was going to be presenting that before now, but he was tied up with some of our FEMA information back to the engineers and back and forth, so they're actively working on this and plan to present at the May VOC meeting. As far as findings, modeling is complete, and analysis and data-driven arguments for sand replacement are being finalized.
All right, so that's actually still for the May meeting, right?
That's what he's telling me at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, good.
And then for the Lawrence Michael remediation, which is now CRR, and you guys discussed tonight, we're currently up to approximately 1.13 million cubic yards lost in the central reach area from both storms. Remediation will be in the $25 million range based on current estimates. Brandon, the staff remain engaged with FEMA. We anticipate project worksheets coming forward soon. It looks as though FEMA plans to combine the storms into one project this time, but we are awaiting confirmation on that. And current, current information is that we have the same North Carolina contact for these storms as we did for Matthew, which I think will be a plus for us, because he knows us by name, and he knows how to reach us by cell and anything else, so we did push for that. And then in regards to the Lockwood Folly inlet deepening and widening to bring the public who may not have been at the budget hearing on Friday up, the workshop, the staff was called to a meeting with the county on 4/3. The county is currently declining the lead, and the town would need to take the lead if we were to go forward with that project on applying for a grant. Upfront, the town would need to pay, based on the numbers that were listed in the engineer's report, $4,132,000, and then submit for reimbursement upon grant approval, and that is if it did not change number-wise, which we're thinking that the permitting would be more than that. The county had significant concerns with the project, to the point that they had the state de-obligating funding. Permitting was uncertain and could tie up our permit when we got ready to do the crossing project. Heather, you'll go to the next slide, please. After that meeting, we came back and talked to our engineer to see what his take on the situation was, if the town decided they wanted to move forward. A similar project just cost $80,000 in permitting alone in the, with the New River Inlet. It could invoke a full EIS based on our shipwrecks that are out there and essential fish habitat. And then in looking at what would it have been option for in the terminal groin EIS, which is not the preferred option, but is the closest thing to modeling that we would have to go on, it was based on a larger template than this project, but again, as far as modeling it, and all we have to go on, it could cause negative impacts to the east end. So the, the board of commissioners decided last Friday in the budget meeting that they did not want to move forward with this project this budget year.
Right, so we could take the deeper, wider, widening the channel off of this cut. All right. All right. The, the one area that's really of concern, continues to be of concern pertaining to the loss of the 80,000 cubic yards of sand that we lost to Oak Island, is the crossing, the MCF Crossing dredging project. And that we know happens once, historically happens once every two, two years. So, and the, the issue that we were advised in a meeting with the Corps of Engineers was that the easements were the issue, but we had that process under control.
I can give you an update on that, if you'd like. Pursue it to the motion that y'all made at the April 3rd meeting, all of the notices of intent, except for four, went out today, the other four are going out tomorrow. Also received some contacts from some folks since that meeting, who I guess got wind of the fact that we were getting ready to send out those notices of intent and have, you know, volunteered more information about ownership of the property. As I told y'all, and I know I've talked to David, and I know I've talked to you, there are apathetic property owners down there, because they, some of, some of those property, not all of them, but some of them do not even understand that they still own a portion of the dry sand beach. The AWW, the AIWW Crossing Dredge is a federally, it's a federal mandate, and what, what I think we're going to see is the question, you know, what are you going to do with this sand if we don't get the easements? Now, of course, in this particular situation, you've got Oak Island across the way that is willing to take the sand, so it's not really what the town would want here, but those notices of intent have gone out, the remaining four will go out tomorrow, and then in the next 30 days, prior to filing condemnation complaints for any folks that we have not obtained easement, we'll be digging extremely deep into family trees, trying to figure out, you know, who may own that property, and the cost of those proceedings will exceed the cost of the condemnation complaints that were filed in the Central Reach project, because there will likely need to be a guardian ad litem appointed for unknown heirs in many cases, but we're going to try to minimize how many times we have to do that. Again, I think we'll still collect, I think we'll collect at least five more easements voluntarily, and maybe more, but come May 15th, 16th, 17th, sometime in that timeframe, the town will tango a quick take condemnation of those easements, and we will report that to the Corps. We have sent to the Corps every easement that we have recorded, and have been in contact with them as recently as this past week. They have not had any comments in response to the easements that we've sent them, but that's, that's the update as of 5 p.m. today.
And my understanding is that we have till May 31st to accomplish all that?
Yes, I think that from my experience with these, with the Corps, and what they want to do is they want to be able to put out an RFP and have certainty that they have the easements in place, so they know where they're placing the pipes, and they have the authority to push the sand and all of that. I do think that there may, 29th deadline that they just gave us.
Two weeks ago.
Two, two weeks ago, which came as a shock, you know, but I do think that they will be willing to put out the RFP, and for some reason, we didn't have condemnation complaints out there, we have the notice of intent, it's a guarantee, so I haven't seen them do that before, but we're just going to go ahead and meet the deadline. That's the plan.
Do they, do they plan on getting back with, with the town pertaining to the status of what they've, you know, they've accepted the information that we've sent them?
They approved the easement before we sent it out. That added an extra layer to it. We sent that to them and got their approval in September. We actually sent it to them, I think, before that, but it took several weeks to get their approval. It held up our ability to collect easements, because we didn't want to send out a bunch of easements and then have to go back out and get them again, but we did get that approval in, I think it was the second week of September, and as a result of that, have been zealously pursuing those. The remaining property owners are, they're just difficult. They're not difficult property owners, I certainly don't want that to be what the message is.
Just the problem.
I mean, there are some examples where there's a person listed as the owner, you don't know why they're listed as the owner, you find that there was the state recorded in Harnett County, but that property's not listed, and so then you are relying on the residuary clause. It's, it's a lot of investigative work. But we're, we're confident that you will have the easements in place by the deadline.
Excellent, okay. The inlet crossing, also dredging, that, where is the bend widener, if it was centered or something? Is that, is that widening that, that crossing?
I'll, I'll address that. What is referred to as the inlet crossing also technically encompasses what's called the bend widener. The bend widener is actually that portion of the intercoastal waterway that is east of the inlet crossing proper, and was, that expansion of the borrowed area was primarily due to the, it gives barges a larger radius to make the turn around the corner up there. So collectively, the term inlet crossing also includes the bend widener. It is a, it is a, I guess, a hydrographic geographic reference point for the area that is east of Brown's Landing up there on the, it's really southeast on the Oak Island side of the waterway, that they've expanded the dredge footprint so that barges can make the turn in there.
That's what I thought.
But we are hoping that with the contractors coming up this year, that no reference that we're getting the easements for, that we will be able to, be able to get the bend widener as part of the project and keep it back as we've done in the past.
Yeah, good, good.
That's where the sand is.
Good. And I know we're all in the same, like I said, we're all in the same, same boat together here, and that the east end of the island was not replenished, we lost a cycle, one two-year cycle, we cannot afford to lose another two-year cycle on the east end. Great work. Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher?
Good evening. When I ask this to be put on the agenda, I assume that we would already have had the audit report from the auditor, and as I was advised a couple of weeks ago, that we would have the audit in hand on the first of last week. I haven't heard from David, so as to when the meeting might be for us to sit with him, but David, can you give us an update on?
He's given us a rough draft as of late last week. He provided a rough draft. There are several data elements that are not in the draft to include some obvious omissions on behalf of the audit firm. Additionally, their management's discussion and analysis has not been drafted, of course, you know, that, that falls to me. Where this year, we've been apprised that, that totally falls to me to do, but we are working with the auditor to provide those few elements that remain back to them.
Have you a feeling as to when, when the audit committee will be asked to sit with you and him, to talk about it, or?
I, at this point in time, I'm unsure as to exactly what their turnaround time will be on that. My turn and the feedback from him would be a couple of weeks in order to get my work done back to them.
So have you in the past asked the auditor to prepare the management discussion and analysis from town?
In the past, the auditor has developed significant portions of the management discussion and analysis to include much of the input that goes into that. Not this year.
Help, help me understand, management discussion and, and analysis, what, what exactly is that? Because I've been audited many, many times in the past, past years, whether it's FDA, DEA, whatever, and I just want to understand, is there a different policy than what I'm accustomed to?
My understanding, management's discussion and analysis, it involves a top-line review of the audit, and then forecasting in the future as, as relates to the information provided in the audit as to how the town will move forward with those results.
So it's corrective action to do?
No, not to the extent, it's more of a forward look in terms of the things, that the information that the audit represents. I think that what, what you're thinking of is, are there any, if there are any findings, what would the recommended deficiency fixes would be?
Right, especially if you had a major earlier, yeah?
Right. That, that is also part of it, but that's not technically a portion of the management's Mr. Fletcher, just as soon as I know more, I'll, I'll give that back to you.
Mr. Town Manager?
My report tonight is verbal and consists of a one-line reminder that the last, I believe, six budget workshops that the board has engaged in over the last several months is scheduled for Friday at 10:00 a.m. Invite everybody to come out if you're interested in seeing how sausage is made. That's, that's where it's at. The second piece of my update is acknowledging the fact that our canal dredging project is finished, those operations wrapped up before the permit expired, and I'm really tickled that we were able to get that done prior to that permit expiring, especially in light of having to deal with some of the consequences of recent Corps of Engineers decisions that have a national scope to them, but we were able to, to deal with those. Those are my two dollars for mine.
David, the spoils area that we used, any feel for how long that's going to take to recover that back to its original condition?
At this point in time, I don't have an estimate on that. We're working through just size and the circumstance out there. Some of the initiatives that we've, one, that the board inquired about is to investigate the possibilities of other dog park sites. Mr. Evans has, has got to develop the protocol and will be working that back toward the board further than that, I don't have any details, but also, we have asked the county if they would include in the development of their master plan for the site across the river, if it would be possible to include a provision in there, or if they were opposed to possibly including a dog park element in that master plan that is under development. They have agreed to include that as one of the elements, so we're, we're working two aspects of the dog park issue simultaneously. I don't foresee a quick fix, I mean, because that's the question, are we going to have a place for dogs to go to this summer? I don't think that we're going to have a solution ready for this summer, but I haven't close to with Mr. Evans on that. There are some access issues that we have to address for some of the town-owned properties, but beyond that, I'm not prepared to comment.
Have they given a suggested timeframe for the project's completion over there?
Not this summer. They've got to develop, they've got to develop a plan, and normally, you know, we've seen those things take six months, because that's a large site, it's 38 acres.
Any more questions, discussion? The mayor's report is real simple, if all of you have a wonderful Easter, and don't forget we have an Easter egg night. Is that true?
We have, we'll have an Easter egg night Friday night, but we are overly full. We cannot take any more people at this time, so here is the room, and you have it registered, I'm so sorry.
What are you going to do?
For rain?
I mean, if it pours rain, what?
We're good.
You're good?
We're good.
That, uh...
We'll have an adapted plan in this room that will involve more than two heats.
I'm sure you'll put off in a grand fashion, but it's summer, what I think's going on in Old Beach is the activity is almost unbelievable from one end to the other. Construction, utility construction, renovations, improvements, it's like a big anthill, everywhere you look, something's going on. Seems to me that property owners in Old Beach are taking more pride in this year than ever before, in appearance of the island, the yards, the houses, the buildings, it's just... It's just a great thing to see. Who wouldn't believe that it's after the storm last fall, that we'd be looking this good? It's an exciting time to be here. Mr. Fletcher?
Yeah, I did just to add on to that, I've only had probably ten years here. Some of you have been here a long time, but just in the ten years I've been here driving Ocean Boulevard, the change between ten years ago and now, the quality of the homes, the nature of it, the appearance of it has gone on. The town's doing a great job of maintaining it, keeping it up, making sure it's built properly. And we've got really nice facilities up there. The island's looking better and better to me. But for tonight, we didn't get as many as I hoped we would have for this meeting. We don't have any, didn't have anybody last week at the budget meeting. The budget's a big issue for the town, so if you have a chance, you want to come and sit in, hear what's going on. Heads up. One, we had one. But thank you for coming tonight and again, have a great Easter.
Mike?
I would just like to ask somebody to show up for the budget meeting. But as, as we listen to the meeting tonight, I think we really, you know, we give lip service. We say, you know, thank you to the people who worked here. When you see what happened, you know, last month and what we discussed today, the lift station went without a hitch. The police did a great job during the tragic time here. We have the canal dredging. I received two letters from the community which outlined all of the work and how far the town has come to be able to do this dredging from what it was in the past. And I think that what, what happens here is a lot of this hard work goes on and there's no problem. And when there's no problem, it's not noticed, but it should be. Just like to acknowledge everybody who works for the town on doing the tricky job, which is one of the reasons why we drive down Ocean Boulevard and looks the way it does and why there's so much building there, because people recognize that this is a hell of a place to be and you can thank the people who do the hard work for that. I appreciate the effort.
I have to echo what Mike says. I really appreciate how hard the staff has been working and to the level of expertise and professionalism that they operate, it really, really shows. I've been really impressed when I go to meetings where our staff is interacting with different authorities, that they are recognized for their knowledge, for their behavior, for their willingness to cooperate and have to stand firm on what we mean. They do a very, very good job. And I think it's just a matter of let's stick to it. Our messages will get through. To the public, I really appreciate you coming to this meeting. I also, I'd like to see more of you at this week's budget meeting if possible. If it is the last workshop, this is your last chance. If you have something that you really, really want to have, you know, discussed or included, this would be behind, it's the last minute, we're at eleventh hour, but you know, we can still listen to what some of our residents, some of our owners would like to see. And if you don't come, I understand. Have a happy Easter.
Mr. President? I'd like to also thank those that attended the meeting this evening, too, that there aren't more people that can come out. And who knows, maybe they're away for the Easter holiday already. I don't know. But I, I'd like to give a special thanks also to the town staff and to our attorney for all the hard work. And I'll tell you what, it, it's not fun going to some of these meetings and being discouraged. You go in one direction, you make a plan, then all of a sudden, everything shifts on you, 180 degrees. And that, and I know, again, I mentioned that four-three meeting that Christie and David attended, that had to be frustrating, very frustrating. But you can see together, we, we identify, okay, what's next? Let's, you know, pick up our pride and move on because we're better people than that. What's going on in the county? I don't know what's going on in the county. I don't know what's going on in, you got more smile on your face. I don't know what's going on with Corps of Engineers. You know, another smile. But we'll, we'll get through that. Together, we can get through that stuff, believe me. When you hear the things of, we have to assume the liability for these projects, whoa, that perks your ears up real quick. I know it perks my ears up real, real quick. So anyhow, I can go on and on, but enjoy the Easter holiday, you and your family. Thank you. Mr. President?
I'll, I'll echo the accolades to the staff. You know, we've been a lot, we've discussed a lot, we're finishing up on things, so, and everybody appreciates it and you don't say enough, but thank you. And I also wish everyone a happy Easter. Thank you.
All right, number twenty-three, perfect comments. I think you know, yes ma'am, I think you know the process.
I'm Dolly Mitchell, 132 Sharpton Drive. I just want to remind you of the plant sale next week. If you'd like to be a donor, any of us in AVBC will be glad to take anybody that you might want to contribute. Three years ago, when new commissioners came in and they started discussing the Thor, not one of those commissioners knew who Chris Clemmons was. And I stood at this podium that night and said, if you don't know that man sitting right there, he holds the island together. This staff holds this island together under David's leadership, and I cannot thank you enough. Thank you for the canal dredging. First time we've gotten money for that. I can remember walking across the canals before they were dredged the first time in like nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, going door to door, raising money because it was out of pocket. I think fifty percent, we were lucky if we got fifty percent of the people to help pay with the dredging. We've come a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes ma'am.
Nobody says I just have to say something, so I just have to say something. Beverly Compton, thirteen seventy. And I will add to that, that even though we had a, for the Holden Beach Beautification Club, that we got first prize of all garden clubs in North Carolina for the pageant garden redesign. And it's been, what's the word? It, it took a lot of plants out when we got Lawrence, and we need to replace a lot of them, and we need donations, as Dolly said, so I definitely second that. And.
Come to the plant sale and buy.
Come to the plant sale, or just give us your money, either one, we'll pay for it. The dog park, sometimes I think there's been one designated down by me and nobody told me, but never mind that story. And there should be severe weather storms for Easter is what I've heard lately. So I mean, like the tornado watches and stuff, I mean, for the egg roll, for the eggs. And if we want to look for money and save money, turn maybe the cooling down in here, but maybe you guys are hot. I'm not as hot somehow. Then who takes care of the potholes coming from my house here? I keep trying to think, where are those potholes? And then, of course, I'm avoiding them, so I sort of miss out. But does somebody have some sand they can throw in there? Some, a couple of them are pretty deep. I would say it's nine hundred block and eight, six hundred.
I've actually awarded funds now with DOT calling and they promised me they were going to be here to head show up and do some of the paving on the curb here on the east end. But I hit one today and I think my front tire is still wet, but it's about eight hundred block. And if I haven't seen anything out of tomorrow, they're not that big a holes, and I might just donate them some coat packs from, from loads in the sack to see if we can keep everybody's wheels on reasonably weekly until we get them in.
And the budget meetings and coming to the meetings here. Let me say that these are not the sexiest agenda for the budget meeting. It says, we're having a budget meeting. Can't you say something like, we're going to discuss this, we're continuing to discuss that? Add something to it to make it more alluring, just as we're having one. I don't know. Nothing to it for me anyway. And I might have more, but I'm, but I'm going to spare you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. It's your turn. All right, second round? All in favor, say aye.